Interim manager going to be here this evening?
Not tonight, no.
Because I was wondering, okay, you girls. I was wondering, how many people are on his planning commission? You said that they have alternates also that sit in, or in the discussions?
Mm-hmm.
Because there's a function of numbers here, and voices and time.
So when I was on boardrooms, it was seven members and then we had two alternates.
And so, and it worked alright.
And I think that was similar to, from what I heard from Doug.
Yeah.
But I double-checked with him.
Yeah, and they, he's going to be working on a process. It works.
If I can't give a hundred percent, I don't commit to this.
Like today, we could use one, or two.
There's other experts that will do that.
I hadn't, frankly, when I set up for that, I hadn't thought of this.
But, see, I was in.
I had been not knowing that we're kind of at the end.
Each council member was responsible for, like, planning parks.
While they're doing something that.
So they went to those areas.
Learning sometimes, so.
We don't have any.
You're asking us to go to their meeting, to the council.
I think that happens on your days. Done, I don't.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's an initiative from the commission itself.
We send one each.
It's a close ordinance, especially the zoning.
And it's, it's actually more intended to gain perspective for yourself. Council perspective back to planning commission?
You know, kind of go through it and.
Almost never have we actually been engaged at the council meeting to share reports on, on what we're doing there.
Well, you have these wonderfully qualified.
That's where there's, that's where the continuity comes.
Yep.
Yeah.
But it, but it has been helpful for us to attend because we gain perspective on city goals and councilman, council perspectives, but then also keep our group updated about what's going on, having not all of us attending or watching all the meetings. Yeah, it has been good. I think it's been a good tool.
Nice, nice. There's a, pretty good support from Victoria with the Lions, don't you? It seems like there's a core bunch of guys that have been there.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a nice trip?
It was good, yeah. It was a business trip. I was in San Diego.
Do you know Sean Eastman?
Aviation.
I live across the street.
I'm right on first Lake.
I'm an architect.
Right before you turn into his place, so I see him.
Airport planning and design.
I walk my dogs back there, so we're always talking. I knew he was.
I was in San Francisco for actually a Garden Club of America annual meeting, and we had.
He's known for.
He was one of the inspiring landscapes.
Do you ever do those ladies classes?
Yep.
And you've met, you don't know my wife, but you've met my wife, because she's gone a couple times to that.
He doesn't just plow down an area and plant a park. There's so much thought that goes into it.
Busy ten years.
It's really good.
I just realized it's the time. Are we ready to get started?
We're ready.
Alright, so I'll go ahead and call to order the, is the mic on?
Yep.
It is, okay. I'll trust you. So I'll go ahead and call to order the planning commission meeting for May 1st, 2018. First on our agenda is to adopt our agenda. Are there any adjustments or additions?
No.
Hearing none, I'll move that we adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll proceed accordingly. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the April 17th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Did anyone have any updates or adjustments? Since I wasn't there, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the moments, or the minutes from the previous meeting as prepared.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. So next on the agenda tonight is the conditionally used permit amendment for outdoor storage in Central Business District for 1400 Steger Lake Lane. Laura, you going to start us off with the report tonight?
Yes, thank you. So this evening, we are looking at the follow-up of the 1400 Steger Lake Lane Conditional Use Permit Amendment. This item had been, before a public hearing held on the last Planning Commission meeting at, on April 17th, after disclosing the planning commi, or excuse me, closing the public hearing and after discussion, the Planning Commission motioned to table the item for further, as a number of questions were raised during the discussion that wanted the applicant and city staff to work through. Since that time, city staff has been able to meet with the applicant and they, we kind of finalized some questions. The items of discussion that were raised by the Planning Commission were concerned the proposed use of the property and if that use would include a new use of auto service station, parking requirements and layouts, and then as well as screening. And so with the, the applicant has submitted a new site plan for the property showing new parking layout as well as worked with city staff to talk through where, kind of what the line of demarcation was on what the uses would be for the property. The uses that we've, the property is proposed for used automobile sales, minor automobile repair for inventory, that means automobiles that are owned by the, the business itself, to be then resold, fixed up, resold with minor auto repair. And then automobile detailing, washing, cleaning, waxing, and other similar detailing actions for customers by appointment only. So no drive-in services. It would be a drop-off by appointment for customers. And then as well as outdoor display of automobiles for sale. The applicant is proposing six perimeter pads as well as one boulder landscape pad in the front lawn and then retail displays in the parking areas within the front and the back. They have also, the applicant has also said that they would like to update the landscaping along Steger Lake Lane. So as far as the questions that came up during the public hearing and then the subsequent discussion, do the proposed uses count as an automobile service station, which is a separate conditional use within the Central Business District? And we have determined that, no. The, the uses that they're proposing do not kind of exceed that limit of where the, they would need to be considered an automobile service station. No major automobile repair, which is defined in the city code, is permitted at all. Minor automobile repair is permitted only for inventory. And then detailing, washing, cleaning, waxing, and similar actions would be permitted by appointment. Can they meet parking requirements? With the kind of clarification around the uses proposed for the site, we had more clarification on what the parking requirements would be. Showrooms, we'll, is a required eight spaces for the size of their proposed showroom. And then a, a different use that hadn't been brought to your attention at the last Planning Commission meeting, open sales and rental lots require one space for every 2,500 square feet of display area. And that's the outdoor display. So we calculated that to be around four spaces totaling the requirement for 12 required spaces for employees and customers. On the site plan, as they have shown, the applicant has a total of 48 entire spaces. And those generally conform to, the layout generally conforms to our parking lot requirements as well, so as far as circulation standards. So with that, the applicant has requested that the number of required spaces be considered for a 50% reduction for six required spaces instead of the required 12. And, but out of 48, it would either be, the remainder would be used for display of inventory. And then the final question of how should the site be screened and/or fenced? Planning staff have recommended that the decorative fence that sits at the front of the property along the drive off of Steger Lake Lane be extended along the southern edge of the property, along the retaining wall as kind of a, a nice visual barrier versus the, the plastic slating that is there right now. And also to allow more visibility for the inventory itself. We have also recommended that the existing screening or similar screening that is along the trail side on the north, that that remain to act as a visual screen from trail users. So this evening, for your consideration, we have some recommend, or recommend, excuse me, recommended amendments to the existing conditional use permit that is on the site. We recommend, staff recommends that the existing conditions of the CUP be removed and in their place, replaced with the following recommendations, and they are in your packet as well as on your screen. And I'm available for questions.
The public parking, the first CUP required 14, and now we're reducing to six recommended by staff, correct?
I want to look to Planning Commission on, for direction on whether we should go forward with the applicant's request for six or require the full 12.
A question I have then, if I'm coming to drop my car off to be detailed, would that be, would I park my car in one of those six public spots?
Likely, yes.
Thank you.
Regardless of how many this evening and then the city council decision, parking are required, we would recommend that those, those spaces be signed. So for customers, or if it's a drop-off spot specifically, we would recommend that that be included on the property.
And add to that, those six spots that we would reduce to, were, are they going to be used by the employees also?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Well, at any given time, detailed car in, detailed car out, two. One person detailing, one person in sales, four. We have two parking spots left.
How much of a hardship would it be on the dealer to reduce his number of display parking places from 48? Say lower it by three so we can increase the other? Because if you think if they have a staff of four people, two people come in to have their car details, no one can fit in to buy a car.
Laura, can you, do you have some more information about the, the boulder landscaping? I can see we got space for six cars around the outside of the building. How many cars could park at that boulder?
That would be for one, and the conditions as written limit that to one on the spot. The design and kind of layout of what that boulder would look like, that will be through, that would be through a landscaping permit. I assume that there are some grading and maybe even engineering details that the city would have to approve in order to make sure that that is sound. But yes, it would be limited to one. So the applicant, as shown on here, there would be seven kind of spots outside of the parking areas for display and then 48 total parking spots. So with six, that would be 42 for display. With 12 would be 36, is that correct math, for display?
So in defense of the parking, the limited parking here, one of the conditions that we would look to amend the CUP with is no parking shall be permitted on Steger Lake Lane, the Park Access Road. Do we limit any other business in town to no parking on a connective street or an entrance street to their business?
I, I'm not aware of if we have conditions. I have worked in other cities where conditions state that employees are not allowed to park on, maybe off-street or, or, or excuse me, on-street. I personally don't know, I don't think Steger Lake Lane, or Steger Lake Boulevard as shown on here allows street parking, from my understanding, as of right now.
I think that's a work in progress.
Yes, there are to be improvements.
Right. But with, with that being said, I guess getting to my point is everyone else downtown has shared parking, so there's an overlay of parking. We don't, this business wouldn't have that advantage to having a business next door where they could share at any given time. So they're really, really handicapped on parking, I understand that. And I, with the parking on Steger Lake Lane, it's not a heavily used park entrance. It's occasional, very occasional, because it's a catch-and-release-only lake. So you don't get regular fishermen in there. You get more of a family approach with a small boat type deal. You don't see 15 vehicles going in there on a Saturday. You might see one or two. So I, I wouldn't be opposed to allowing parking on one side if we posted one side solid as, as a condition, because I, once we take away all the parking on that Park Access Road, it really, really cuts off any parking. And they usually don't, wouldn't have a rush of 10 vehicles at this lot at any given time, but they might have to park a couple cars out on that street if three people did show up or four extra people on a weekend.
I will say that the existing use that's there right now has a provision that no parking is allowed along that drive. Similarly, no parking for the use allowed on the trail or also just the storage of display vehicles. So there's kind of that distinction. That we, you can't have inventory especially parked not on the site.
Right, correct. And it would be for patrons only or, you know, obviously of.
So, so I'm a little hesitant to come at it from that angle in terms of we're, we're already thinking about the provisions or requirements that need to be made to keep them off the street, but the reality is, in practice, if there's no spaces available, people will park on the streets. And more, you know, as more people come and and I, I don't know that there's a hardship in terms of stalls. I mean, I can appreciate a, a goal for maximize the number of, of stalls for, for inventory, but I mean, my sense is that these guidelines that, that, you know, through the calculations get us to a requirement of 12 is, is based on the, you know, there's expertise behind the, the business case for those uses in terms of what can be expected and, and they, they factor in the, the unforeseen in terms of promotional events that draw more people. You know, demand, bringing in more employees and increasing the, the mix and total count of cars. Staff meetings, things that will happen in the natural course of business. I worry that the reduction to six is based on, you know, the shared parking ordinance, but I'm not, I agree with you, Todd. I'm not sure that applies here because it doesn't have beneficial adjacency that could make that practical in any way. So if we start with an approval of, of six, it just seems too lean from the start and it's naturally going to overflow. I can appreciate that traffic's not heavy to, to the landing. I'm a little concerned about Steger because I think that traffic is, is picking up there. And for parking to start occurring in a disorganized fashion, just based on lack of space, can start to create some challenges, more so a safety concern at an intersection that can be increasingly challenging as we increase residents downtown and, and traffic levels.
And I appreciate those comments, I guess, and that's all true, based on our current parking ordinance, which we know is troublesome to begin with, just because of the lack of parking. But everything based, the 12 parking spots themselves were based off of that same parking formulation that we use downtown. And a lot of those 12 spaces, if it were downtown, were going to be achieved by using another business's parking spots, which aren't available here. So it could be three businesses that achieve those 12 spots or use those same 12 spots at any given time when we do our shared parking ordinance. And Steger Lake Lane, I 100% agree, we can't be parking on that. Plus there's, with improvements and everything that's going to be done, that'll come at a later time, I believe, but I agree with you 100% on that, that that's not a viable place to park.
Yeah, so let's clear, I'd like to clarify that a little bit more what you said. So you're suggesting that the calculations used are based on Central Business District requirements, right? And that, that, is it true that that calculation results in a number that is counting on the sharing of spaces with other adjacent businesses?
So the, the 12 spots required comes from our parking, off-street parking and loading section of our zoning ordinance. Those are based on use regardless of where they are located. And then there's additional provisions within our ordinance regarding the, let's see if I can pull this up quickly, regarding the Central Business District. So those say that new development or significant redevelopment may decrease the parking spaces by up to 50% with the exception of residential uses. And.
Yeah, so I think the, the shared parking understanding in the Central Business District is what gets you to a 50% reduction. It gets you a number of six.
Correct.
But the, but the requirement for 12 is based on use. Or even in the, in the Central Business District, it's, the calculations tell us that 12 spaces are necessary. But because if it were in the Central Business District and the 50% reduction applied, it would allow for some of those spaces to be across the street at a, at a neighboring business's lot, for example.
Yes, I should clarify that this property is within the Central Business District. So it does have that zoning. But as you can see here, the available shared parking means parking that is available to be shared by different uses in the Central Business District to support the base, to support the base level of development. Anticipated future private development is what, base level parking is also an element of that. So I, my reading of the shared parking ordinance is that that is intended for spots on your property could be shared by others within the district, other uses that maybe have different timeframes or different needs. And so you could go with your adjoining neighbor and the two of you together could have a reduction 50% each and as long as there's a shared understanding. I think the applicant's request mostly comes from their experience with their other properties, knowing that the use that's requested here, that they have seen not as much of a demand for parking as 12 spaces and believe that six is more in accordance with what the kind of bulk that they are anticipating as far as employees and and so we as staff wanted to kind of leave that more up to the Planning Commission. I don't know how parking reductions or shared parking have been handled in the past. I, on a personal level, I do believe that the way that this is written, that the shared parking ordinance is more for the actual sharing of parking spaces between uses. However, I also know in my experience with a lot of cities that minimum standards for parking tend to be higher than what's actually needed. But that, it is what is in the ordinance, so those are the two elements to balance there.
So the six spaces that he's, that the company believes would be adequate is based on their current location. Moving to this location, they talked about increasing traffic and customers and stuff, so I'm not sure that six is going to be adequate to him.
I believe that at their current location, which doesn't have the services element, that they have three customer spots right now. And perhaps if you want to have the applicant come up and answer some questions, that might be more helpful. But I don't know for their current location how many spots are needed for employees. So that is something to take into consideration for. These parking requirements are for both customers and employees, so we want to make sure that employees also have places to park.
Sure. I mean, just intuition, Todd, I think you started to summarize earlier, you know, if there's a sales, salesperson, a service person, assuming there's a, a third person helping manage among them, that's three of the six. If there's anybody there for, for detailing service, either in or out, that's either one or two. And that's leaving either one or two for, for customers. And that, that occupies the six almost immediately off the top. So I'm, I'm concerned about the six. So I'm, I'm concerned about the six as proposed. To be honest, I'm, I'm inclined to, to lean towards the, what the calculations tell us, mostly because I think the, the site is unique and, and the risk, there's potential for risk in the future, but also while it's in the central business district, I'm just not seeing a practical opportunity to, for a shared parking arrangement, either now or in the future. I mean, do we think there's an adjacent development nearby that would be practical for a, a shared space arrangement? I'm not seeing it.
Not very likely. To the north, obviously, is the park. To the very far west, there are some similar uses, but those are probably likely too far away at this point to be used for parking. Future improvements to Steger Lake Lane will include some on-street parking, so that could provide future relief, but that, I don't know has been, if that's been officially scheduled for updating.
So my, my sense of those future developments is that, you know, we're talking about parking spaces, right? And so as, as site conditions evolve and development happens on streets over time, I could imagine, I think I saw that this includes an annual review of the, of the conditional use and the conditions, that if it were so clear in the future that that was advantageous and there was available spaces nearby, then that doesn't seem like a stretch to reevaluate at that time, but I'm a little hesitant about starting there.
Okay.
And I'm hoping this business is wildly successful and there's people coming and going all the time, but I would hate to start out with a disconnect in terms of that overflow.
I agree, I'm comfortable with, you know, the adjustments made to the repair portion of this, and it's the parking that I'm really concerned about. I don't want to start out behind the curve and then have to try and catch up. But well, let's look at it then from the 12 parking spots and take away the five that could be used by employees and then do details in and out. Now we have seven spots left over. Do we think there would be seven customers there at any one given time that would need those spots? What I'm, what I'm looking at here is a compromise.
Compromise, I remember.
At nine, because now we're reality, we're at four spots that would be available for customers. If there was two being serviced, you know, in those spots, and then the three employees. And then again, once again, with your point, within a year, we can, we look at it, if we find they're parking on the street all the time, we'll look at that condition use and say, here's what we have to do to improve safety and not violate your own CUP, we have to increase parking spots on the lot. It's just a thought.
Mm-hmm. I'd be more comfortable, I'd be more comfortable with that.
Or do we err on the side of caution, go with 12, and then it's reviewed annually and then, you know, take it up next year and say, it looks like it's possible to reduce it to nine? Or do we start out with a nine right away?
I think that's harder, harder to monitor because I don't think you drive by or the police would drive by and say, you know, or any city employee drive by and see empty spots in their lot. But they are going to see cars parked on the road.
Correct.
For, for as that goes, and that might be a ticketed event then because there is no parking, we have that in the condition. And if, if it does become an issue, then it has to be revisited and there would be parking tickets handed out at that time, you know, after a warning or, you know.
It should be noted that any, at the annual review, that is typically meant to monitor if they're maintaining the conditions that are set forth. And so on the city's side, to kind of force a new condition, I don't know that you could do that. The applicant could certainly, or the owner could apply for an amendment similar to this process and perhaps to, if it was at, set for 12 now, and then at the annual review, they applied to have that amended with maybe documentation showing that three of those spots are never used or something along those lines. The planning commission could, as one of the conditions with that review, recommend that the fee for review things along those lines be waived for the application for a conditional use permit. That way you're not putting too much of an onerous on the applicant themselves. But as far as the, the property rights that go with the approval of a conditional use permit, those conditions are, as long as they are met, the property owner is allowed by right to continue, and so the city wouldn't be able to go in later and say, we were wrong, we need to increase the number of parking spots required.
Yeah, and I guess it wouldn't be that we were wrong, what we'd be saying is you're in violation because you're parking on the street, which was one of the conditions we had set forth. So there, at that point, then we have a violation of the CUP to begin with. So if there's no, if there's nothing we can do at that time, then there's no point in having a review of these CUPs. That's why we have those conditions in there, because once they violate one, then it becomes an open subject on either end, I would, I would hope. Otherwise, the city has no point in signing a CUP and then will just let them generally use it and take their risk on getting tickets. So I, I would think there would be some recourse if they're not following at least one or two of the conditions by not parking on the park entrance.
Yes, yep, that is correct.
Okay.
I think, I think you're both right, but there's some nuance among, among it in that in terms of the city reviewing the condition use permit annually, that's an administrative thing, right? It's not coming before this body for a review annually. And so in order to make adjustments, the, the condition use process requires it be initiated by the applicant, right? The, the city wouldn't initiate the process and bring it before this commission and, and invite the applicant in to, to review it.
Do we know that? Do we, because have we had a violation of a CUP where they didn't conform to one of the conditions we set forth and, you know what I mean? I guess.
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that it, it can't, but in terms of a more natural flow of initiating the process, if, if a condition were included today, which stated 12 spaces must be provided, it would be natural for a year from now for the applicant to come before us with demonstrated supporting documentation that it's unnecessary, can we adjust the conditional use, right? But it would be less natural for us, for example, today to say eight or nine are required, and then a year from now, the city think, well, geez, we've been seeing a lot of parking on the road, it's a little unsafe, let's call up the applicant and ask him to initiate a condition use permit review so we can change, like, that would be, that might be possible, I don't know, but it seems like a very unnatural flow of, of procedures.
I understand what you're saying, yeah, as far as the procedure goes, I, I would agree with that, but it wouldn't be us asking the applicant, applicant to come back in. It would be a notice of violation of his parking on the street that would generate a review, and he would have to come back in to review it. I guess I don't know how that end works, so I, I hate to speculate on that, but if, but I, I do agree, I guess, with the fact that if the 12 is in place, we'll let the applicant act on the 12, is what you're saying? If he doesn't think and he can prove that he doesn't need them, more natural process.
Right.
Okay.
I, I think.
I understand that.
I think there would be that opportunity for that adjustment in the future. That seems like a, I mean, if the types of things we're talking about is overflow parking and potential risk on the roadway, given what the calculations are indicating, that's where my level of comfort is, is recommending moving forward with, with 12 as, as a condition. So that we're not reacting to overflow and dangerous situations and, and dealing with it in a, in a penalized way, but instead setting the site up for success. I know that the, that the owner would prefer a slightly different direction, but it, I'm trying to look at this from a, from a city, safety, public, you know, like a broader view, you know, beyond individual and this whole business is really successful in this new location and, and it proves to be warranted based on what industry calculations tell us that it should be.
When I, when I, when I look at this, this lot, I mean, it's in a great location, but it, it has some unique features in that it's almost its own little island, you know, we've got fencing around the back, we've got, we've got fencing and a retaining wall in the front. And just in the, the day-to-day business, let's say any one of us is there and we want to take a test drive in that vehicle that's right in front of the building, or even on, on the side or on the boulder. Now we're into the jigsaw puzzle that every car dealership works, works with, we're, we're moving cars. And the unique shape of this is just, we're, we're landlocked right there. It's not like a dealership where we're just an immense parking lot and we can just move things off. With so few extra parking spots, that, that's a concern to me, anything less than 12, to, to at least see how it works.
It's available, and also.
And there are actually seven now. There's a handicap place, that counts?
Yes, we're counting that as one of the spots.
Six are here. I see six plus the seven.
Oh, those aren't.
Parking spaces.
Parking, those are for display on, they're actually on like a sidewalk that surrounds the front of the building. The parking lot.
Okay.
Are, those are just to give kind of a general idea of the size of where, and location of where those display.
So where are the parking places that they're going to reserve for?
Those have not been designated specifically on the site plan. On their previous submission, they had indicated three in the front, so one handicapped and two at the front entrance, and then likely employee parking reserved along the back wall here. And we could, staff would work through that with them to note where the, where those spots are located on the site.
Oh, it says retail, not detail, I see. Need glasses? Two spaces retail? Oh, it doesn't say. I see. Thank you.
So I think beyond the parking, I mean, I wasn't here for the last discussion, but I, I have an appreciation for the, for the, the back and forth about the, the use and the clarity and around the interpretation of that use. Seems like landscaping and, and screening has been improved in reaction to that discussion.
Yeah, absolutely, especially maintaining, you know, continuing that decorative fence along the front. That's a great idea because that, that chain link there is not especially appealing for, for selling cars or anything.
And the landscaping hasn't been touched.
Yeah, it would be great.
It needs a cleanup too.
That would be very nice.
That'll clean that whole thing up.
And the applicant has indicated that the, the landscaping has some good bones to it, but just hasn't been maintained, and so they're likely going to just sort of prune everything back and make it look better, and that alone will likely improve the site significantly.
Okay, I had one more question just about the continuing use, and this is just for my information. I was a little confused when on page four of seven of the, under zoning standards, it said, the current CUP on the property is for retail, sales and service operations requiring outside storage of products for sale, including but not limited to automobile, automobile, truck, tractor, boat, or other mobile power-driven equipment, sales or services. So, but on the condition use permit, the change, it says, the one that was submitted by the applicant, CPS holding existing use of property, water, sports and recreational vehicles, sales and repair. It doesn't say anything about automobile, trucks, tractors, is there something I'm missing that?
Correct, I think that was just, the applicant didn't know the specific wording of the existing CUP.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
So the, the actual wording includes all that language and everything.
Correct, yep, and.
That's what I figured happens, I just, something in my mind makes me have to know those.
Yes, no, I, I understand, and so those, that element that's in quotes, that is what is allowed under a CUP within the central business district, and then the existing CUP has conditions on top of that, and that's what's being amended, requested to be amended. So that conditional use, which includes the, the retail sales and outdoor storage of products for sale of this, the automobiles, as well as the minor services, that planning staff feel is encompassed for what they're asking. It's then in the conditions that we set, or that the city sets, that kind of gets more into the nitty-gritty.
Right, yep, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Otherwise, I'd be prepared to make a motion. So I'll start by saying that because it's a conditional use permit, there's the, the four findings that we're attempting to ensure that this complies with, right? And I won't read them, but I, but I feel like with the adjustment to the parking, the first condition is met in terms of it'll not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort or general welfare, and I think two, three and four had previously been met in terms of the spirit of a conditional use. And so with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation of a conditional use permit amendment allowing for outdoor display of automobiles for sale and outdoor storage of automobiles at the site in question, with the conditions as noted, but an additional condition number 15, which states that 12 of those spaces should be reserved for employees slash customers. Did I word that in an acceptable manner? I didn't make reference to a, a number of resolution, I don't think we've got that in the packet.
Correct, so we are no longer doing resolutions at the planning commission level. As the, those aren't recorded anywhere.
Okay.
So the city council, in their approval, it will be recorded with a resolution. One minor adjustment, Mr. Chair, to, it should be a, a motion to recommend approval to the city council.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I did it last week too, so.
A motion to approve a recommendation of approval.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, okay, and we all know the property we're talking about, so with that, I'll ask if there's a, a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, sounds like we'll move forward at the next city council meeting, is that the?
Yes, yep, and that will be May 14th, Monday, May 14th. Mr. Chair.
You can share your thoughts, we've, we've acted, and we don't have a public hearing, but you're, you're welcome to, to share some thoughts. Otherwise, I think if you've got some additional input at, at the city council meeting, would, would be insightful to share with that group as well, since they're, they're acting.
Well, I'll share my thoughts.
Yeah.
Currently, location ring, we have 50 cars there, so we're already asked for reduction in parking as far as numbers of units we can have for sale.
Can I join us up at the podium, just so we can get you on the mic and? Can I have you join us up at the podium, just so we can get you on the mic, and you wouldn't mind introducing yourself with your name and address?
Strong, Maconia Dodge. I just want to go over a couple of things about parking, because 12 is a huge deal to us, just to be frank. It'll probably make us pull the purchase agreement. We just, it won't work. Currently, our walk-in traffic's not that great over there. In 2014, 2014, our average walk-in traffic was 10 people a month. 2015 was 11.9, obviously, so 12 a month. 2016 was 7.5 a month, and 2017 was 11 a month. That's our walk-in traffic in that facility, as we document, so taking away that percentage of retail parking definitely hinders the property use for us. Currently, at our facility in Maconia Dodge, if you take out the mechanical side of the parking, we have eight spots in the front of the facility for customers and two handicapped, which suits us fine. We have over, we have about 250 cars on the ground, and we get by with that. So to take and ask for more than that facility with a building that's 5,000 square feet versus 25,000 square feet, I guess you take out the service side of it, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. We currently, in Victoria, if we have more than the three spots, if we have more than two customers there at one point in time, that's extreme. So we were okay when we came last time to talk about, you know, the service end of it and took that out, which is a big deal for us when you're a car dealership to go to retail customer service, so we were willing to take that out of there, which for ability to generate revenue is huge. So we like this location, but to reduce it down to something we have less of, it probably wouldn't make sense for us to move forward. So I don't know, I think you, unfortunately, I think the current landlord will probably struggle to sell the place with reduced parking like that, so I wish he was here, but I, I just don't see the need for that amount of parking for the business we do. And if you're talking about retail detail, I'd rather take the retail detailing out of the equation and operate somewhere else, because we won't do that kind of business with retail detail parking. Right now, I run a detail facility in Northern America, I do about 16 a month. The customers come in, the cars go in the shop, they're detailed, they come out, they pretty much leave the same time, so they must have parkings inside the shop anyways. So I, that 12 numbers is huge to us. I, I can see, I mean, you're taking out the whole, basically, there's 14 across the back with the original, you're taking out pretty much the whole display of the, of the, of the facility. So I just wanted to bring you guys, I don't know if you guys saw it from last time, but that, that's what our walk-in traffic is, you know, and it's pretty consistent. Most of our, most of our sales are done off the internet, people do come in, but I mean, that's, we don't have that kind of run of business.
Yeah.
So Laura, is there a public hearing at the city council meeting?
There is not. As the public hearing was already held for this item, however, the, in our presentation to the city council, we can reflect your comments this evening.
So if he supplied that information and comments?
If the council would like to invite him up to speak, otherwise, I can also generalize or summarize what you've said tonight and.
I can probably provide you more data too.
Yeah, if you would like to send.
It's hard to provide data on a facility, but I can tell you what our Maconia facility handles, and it's, there isn't 12 parking spots for retail customers walking away by cars, there's eight.
So with them being the ones that actually approve it and we just make a recommendation, I'd strongly recommend providing.
Just want you guys to see my point of view from the recommendation of, you know, the number of spots, because like I said, we don't see that kind of business there.
And, you know, I heard that the last time too, that's why I kind of went to bat for that lower end of the number thing, but for our approach as a planning commission, you know, with an agreement with the majority that stick with the 12 and then it can be reduced, is, was a sensible approach for this meeting, so.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the next item on our agenda is the Shoreland Ordinance update. Laura?
Thank you. In your packets, you have a memo from Rita Trapp. She is a consulting planner with Hoyzington Cogler Group, one of my coworkers, and she is kind of spearheading the Shoreland Ordinance on behalf of City of Victoria. I know that this planning commission has reviewed some elements on Shoreland with Ben Landhauser. However, we're kind of taking a little bit of a step back and just sort of want to approach this holistically. HKGI's involvement in this ordinance will continue through new staff, so we will be helping, we will obviously take input from the new staff, but we will be a consistent, and particularly Rita, will be a consistent voice through this whole entire thing. She could not attend this evening as she had another planning commission meeting to attend. So, and I know that we have some new planning commissioners as well, so just kind of want to take a broad overview of why we're looking at the Shoreland Ordinance today, and then discuss some elements that we need, we at HKGI need direction on so that can put together a draft for us to start kind of looking at. So in general, the Shoreland regulations are set up to essentially put an extra layer of protection around lakes and water for the ecological, recreational, and economic value that lakes and rivers provide in Minnesota. They, the Shoreland extends 1,000 feet from ordinary high wa, excuse me, high water level of 16 designated lakes within Victoria and 300 feet from nine tributaries and/or streams. And so Victoria is a bit unique in that you have so much Shoreland in so many places, and so this is important that we are, as considering this, know the direction that we want to go. In general, the, the Shoreland Ordinance is, or the requirement of protecting shorelands is a DNR, Minnesota DNR initiative, and they establish a, a model ordinance which sets standards that they feel protect the water bodies from the, from things such as runoff, too much development right along the shore, too many docks, things along those lines. And the City of Victoria, typically when a city writes their Shoreland Ordinance, it's then passed along to the DNR to see if it complies with theirs. If it does, then the DNR gives it a stamp and says, okay, your zoning code and the enforcement of it is in compliance with what the DNR says. Victoria has never had a Shoreland Ordinance that has been in compliance. We do have a Shoreland Ordinance, but we've never gotten that rubber stamp, and because of that, they, the DNR, anytime a development or a, a conditional use permit or a variance or any item that requires a public hearing, the DNR has to be notified, and then they also need to make sure that it meets their standards. And so it adds an extra layer of time to a lot of our development processes, as well as kind of takes away some of the control that the city has over their own zoning ordinance. Shorelands are broken up by lake type. There are three different lake types, the, the highest being, or the general development being the least restrictive and natural environment being the most restrictive. General environment lakes include Lake Minnetonka and Lake Bavaria. We have, even though the lake is not within the city borders, there's a tiny bit of the Shoreland of that lake that is within the city. Next, are recreational development lakes. These tend to be kind of medium in size, have varying depths and varying levels of develop. And we have nine recreational development lakes within Victoria. And then natural environment lakes are those that are less developed, typically smaller, smaller and shallower, so they're more susceptible to the effects of runoff and other elements such as that. So those have more restrictive regulations from the DNR's perspective. So the ordinance that the city has right now was developed in 1975. There have been minor amendments since then. It has, as I stated before, not, not been in compliance with the Minnesota DNR regulations. Without compliance, as I had mentioned, that additional review kind of takes away the city's ability to vary from, from their ordinances for local conditions, and there are, if the city's Shoreland Ordinance was in compliance, the city would have a little bit more flexibility and wouldn't have to go through that review. But developing a new ordinance is going to take a while and requires discussion and negotiation with Minnesota DNR. So with all of that in mind, we have, Rita has put together kind of a general process with this. We're estimating somewhere between four and six months of what this process would look like. It starts with our discussion this evening, moving on to preparing a draft of the ordinance. Once a substantial draft is completed, then it will be time to solicit input from the DNR, and to take that input into consideration through, and then with revisions to the ordinance. Once the ordinance is where the city feels, and the planning commission and city council feels it should be, the planning commission will hold a public hearing, and the city council will consider adoption. Once it has been adopted, then the DNR will do an official review and issue a letter authorizing its implementation. Some elements that have changed since you last heard about this subject, Minnesota DNR has put out a new model ordinance for their, for Shoreland, and that looks like this. And this is something that I can, didn't have in time to put in your packets, but I can pass along via email or put online. And essentially, overview, it gives a, it provides a draft framework for how to approach Shoreland in particular, and how it, how it should be structured, and then they kind of list everything and in their model ordinance, and then there are some elements that they highlight as statutorily required and others that are optional within their draft, within their model ordinance. So one element up for discussion this evening is to determine how we, as the city, want to address the writing of this ordinance, if we want to start using the model and adapt the model to meet, to have our city regulations kind of put on top of it. In many areas of the ordinance, kind of comparing them side by side, cities' requirements are more strict, which is allowed. The city can have higher restrictions on, say, lot size or other elements. However, as far as those minimum requirements, we, there are some areas that we would need to adjust. Another part of it is that not everything that the DNR is looking at needs to be set in stone. They kind of take a city's, city's existing conditions into consideration, and if the intention of certain elements of the ordinance are intended to kind of protect perhaps Shoreland around new development or previously undeveloped lakes, that could possibly be a trade-off for other elements, such as our central business district is almost completely within the Shoreland zone, and kind of how to balance that. The alternative to using the Minnesota DNR model and starting there and then adapting that would be to use the existing city regulations and then modify them just enough to meet the, the DNR's standards. From a writing perspective, it is easier to adjust the model to where we need to be or to kind of bring it up to where the city is now. However, you know, that is, we're looking for direction on that of what would be preferred. And I'll walk through the rest of my presentation and then we can kind of come back to this, if that's okay? Sorry. Another element for discussion is concerns multifamily residential. The current ordinance that you have has regulations regarding multifamily residential built within the Shoreland. Currently, the DNR does not really think about these uses within Shoreland. They, so this would be something that we would immediately want to bring to their attention and figure out what they, what they're willing to consider regarding multifamily. The way that they have looked at it in other places is that multifamily can only be done through a PUD and is limited to the densities that are allowed with single-family residential, which obviously can be very limiting. And that could have an impact on places such as the downtown where we have multifamily and higher-density residential uses being looked at, but also the downtown has its own stormwater system that is separate from the lake, so there's no runoff that's going into Stager Lake. So these are all elements that we can kind of, that's what the discussion with the DNR would be for. The existing components within Victoria's Shoreland Ordinance regarding multifamily are likely to be favorable. The minimum 10-acre size for development, minimum of having 50% open space, the addition, having additional park dedication on top of the open space, and a building setback of at least 150 feet, those are all likely to be things that the DNR would consider favorable. One element also for discussion, and I've alluded to this already, with maximum impervious surface coverage, the DNR's ordinance has, sets a limit of 25% within Shoreland areas. They will allow up to 35% with stormwater management plans. Historically, so every PUD that has gone or been approved in the city, which is, has been in many of the shoreline areas, are existing residential PUDs. The DNR had to review each of those and sign off on them. So they have allowed higher impervious surface limits in the PUDs. Presumably through that PUD process, additional protections were put in or easements or buffers for the lakes, ensuring that maybe the parcels that are right along the lake have different impervious surface or that there are areas that are protected from impervious surface. So going forward, we would want to, within any drafting of our document, to essentially memorialize that those PUD agreements and the impervious surface established in those PUD agreements would continue. And that we wouldn't all of a sudden be requiring 25% in areas that previously required 40%. Similarly, there's language within the code that talks about central business district being limited to 80%. Other areas of the code say there's no limit on impervious as long as it's within a stormwater management district. So that needs to be established and then memorialized, as we said before. The last item for, to talk through is exploring the, an idea of an alternative approach for new development. And this is what, those of you who were on the planning commission in December, the Woodbury model that Ben had presented on then. This would be for areas with new developments, not ones that already exist. But the approach would, excuse me, require a certain amount of shoreline to be preserved as an outlot or dedicated to the city. So it would likely be city-owned property along the shoreline itself. That then would allow all the development lots to be considered non-riparian, which means that they do not touch the shore. Non-riparian lots are much less restrictive on the DNR side. They can then be allowed to be the lot size and width of underlying zoning districts and essentially be allowed to develop in more standard ways. And I, from my understanding, the cities, or in particular Ben's direction in looking at Woodbury as a model for that type of alternate approach was intended to steer away from the PUD-type development. And so, looking at that, go back to our map here. Looking to the future and with our comprehensive plan, the lakes that have yet to be developed around the lakeshore, a little bit hard to see, but down here, it would mostly be Marsh Lake and then certain parts of Pearson's Lake that haven't currently been subdivided. Those areas have, for the most part, single-family, excuse me, are proposed for low-density residential in the comprehensive plan with some conservation residential, which would allow even lower densities. So in general, those are the areas that we would kind of like need direction for before moving forward and before Rita can start really attacking the drafting of the ordinance. And so I'm available for questions or discussion and to take your direction.
Thanks, Laura. I'll start with a quick question, just because as soon as I saw the topic on the agenda, I was curious if you, I guess, had the opportunity to review some of the historical information around this topic in terms of like the why, the why we've done it the way we've done it for so long. And I think the reason I'm interested in that is I, so I've been on the commission for eight, going on nine years now, and I remember early in my experience here with that, we went through a review of the, of the shoreline ordinance. And I can't remember specifically what it was, but I thought that there was a particular reason. And I don't know if it was the, the size and breadth of the model ordinance or if there were some, some deal breakers that were, that were requirements that were either too rigid or didn't align with the city's approach and some of the other related ordinances. But I thought, I thought there's a particular reason why that it was a choice. And now maybe that changed because of what you suggested, if the changes were so drastic in 2017. But I'm, I'm a little cautious to sort of go all in without understanding a little bit of the reason why. Or the reality is, is we'll, we may find out when we get really far down in the process, oh, this is a, this is a problem. And we've sort of invested a lot of energy in going too deep before understanding some of the why before we do so. So I don't want that to restrict us from moving forward. But I think that might be, you had a list of next steps. That might be number one on the next steps is try to understand a little bit of the historical context, just to prevent us from
Yep.
stepping on our own toes, so to speak.
Yeah, I distinctly remember, you know, reviewing this, this couple of times now. We've both been around for eight, nine years.
Yeah, more than once.
Yeah, more than once.
In the last couple of years and then.
And a lot of our own rules with our shoreline ordinance were in excess of what the DNR wanted for a long time. We were, actually told us that we were doing a great job at that time. And I think we left it how it was because it gave us flexibility through a PUD to do certain different developments because we had greater restrictions. They gave us a little easiness or whatever, forgiveness on some of our developments or the thought of them, I guess. But without knowing what the new DNR update is, it's hard to say.
Two things that you just spurred my memory. It might have been because of our traditional PUD process that we had done until a year or two ago. You know, that was sort of the, the way the city handled development is more often than not through the, through the PUD. And so that might be something to do with it. When you were talking about the multifamily, that might also have something to do with it in terms of, you know, either because there weren't, weren't the requirements in the, in the model ordinance or that there was such a disconnect that, and the reality is, is that multifamily would continue based on when you look at the, the city map and how much shoreline there is both today and going forward. That might, I'm kind of thinking out loud, but that might also have something to do with it. And so I don't know if there's like flexibility or inherent lack of flexibility around those that might be the reason why, but.
That was sort of my thought in reading through the material before is like, wow, we have, you know, since 1975, there must be some sort of a compelling reason why it hasn't been, without seeing the new stuff also yet.
And it hasn't that we haven't, just as a city or as a, as a commission disgusted. In fact, we, we have quite rigorously. But made the, but I'm not remembering the context, but eight years ago and again, and you know, a few years ago, it was purposeful that we didn't revert to that. Because on the surface, it seems like that would be the path of least resistance. You know, let's just, let's comply, let's go forward. But there, there was a reason why we hesitated. And so I'd, I'd like to understand or look back in history a little bit and just make sure we understand, understand the why.
I actually, now that you bring that up, I remember about three years ago or four years ago or so, when I had been helping consult with the city previously, that this was something being considered at that time as well.
I, I feel like the, there's a real significant rewrite and adjustment, you know, based on our memory, probably in the seven or eight-year ago range. And then again, you know, let's say the two to four-year range kind of a revisit. And then ultimately now, when we went through the, the new ordinances for the standard zoning in, in the past year, the intent was to come back and get to this section so that it also aligned with that philosophy, right? Because we shifted away from the PUD process, trying to go to more standard zoning and then getting the shoreline, shoreline overlay updated to reflect that intention was, was a goal. And that's why it's here now. Did Ben have a good start? When you mentioned the alternative approach and starting to think about, you know, the edge condition around waterfront and, and standard zoning. I wasn't sure if he got started on the process.
I don't know that he started writing an ordinance or adjusting the current ordinance. But I know that the presentation from December that he had highlighted some areas of the Woodbury Code, which was kind of being used as the model as being applicable for Victoria, so.
Yeah, I remember that discussion. I thought it was a good. He was setting the stage for the hard work to come. But I think discussing with us as a group about the philosophy, because, because that's what it comes down to, a shift in philosophy in terms of rather than trying to control the density as it abuts the water, instead shift the philosophy and create a buffer and then let it be what it is, but it's up, but it's all further away from the lake. So it's, it's not riparian lots with, you know, development right up to the, to the water's edge.
Was that done so currently on, on Wasserman, on that south side? I'm sorry, I don't know the development name, but it's fairly new houses and there's that one row that's right along Wasserman. But there, but there's trees between the homes and the lakeshore, but it's very close.
That, that was, that was common with the philosophy. Maybe not executed the exact way that in the future would be written, but that was, I think, one of the, one of the more recent developments that, that got us talking and thinking about that as a strategy. It preserved the, it preserved the lakeshore. Yeah, the natural vegetation, the tree line. And, you know, that's protected.
Right.
So there's lack of access for, for those lots, but they get the view.
The view. That was probably four years ago, you were talking about that. Three years.
Well, yeah. Time flies around here, but could be another three.
A lot of them have been there probably for sure a year.
Yeah, yeah. But that was a, I bet that was a PUD and that was a, that was a part of the, the discussion in terms of the, the trade-offs and the benefit to the, to not only the development, but also the community and preservation of the water quality and.
Kind of makes sense, the history of it too, how it, you know, kind of shifting from the PUDs and then that.
Right, so I bet that went forward as a PUD and now thinking about, since we've gone away from PUDs, how to apply that philosophy. And I think that's what Ben was setting the stage with that discussion in terms of, well, there's a way to do that. And actually, not only mutually meet the goals to preserve the, the water bodies, but also simplify the development process so that it's more commonly understood that, look, you know, there's this buffer, but the, the benefit is that now it's the standard zoning once, you know, whatever it is, an R1, R2, whatever it is. But it's not this, this sort of unique set of circumstances for every development that comes along. And then lack of understanding as time goes on about what that means. And the neighboring development has different circumstances that were agreed and neighbors get confused about that, so.
So what I'm hearing from you as far as direction regarding the ordinance framework is that before jumping in with the model ordinance, would like to have a bit more information on where this, the reason why the city previously hasn't been, has continued to decide to not be in compliance or to submit to the DNR. And if that is related to those PUD elements or whatever that have since changed, if that is the main reason, then would moving forward with the model ordinance be preferred or highlighting where those changes would need to happen? Or I'm, you know, want to try to give direction so we can move forward for Rita?
I guess I feel, have an exposure to the new model ordinance first, but I like having the alternate as a tool of development as opposed to being restricted just to the model ordinance. Because it, it had worked. Our alternatives or, or non-compliant shoreline ordinance has worked in some of our other developments as far as buffering and saving shoreline. And I like that flexibility, I guess, that instead of being forced into what the DNR has. And, and generally saying like you had stated, they have, our developments, they have said, yes, go ahead. We agree with your analysis of the, your shoreline use. So we've never been, at least when I've been, I've never, we've never gotten back from the DNR that said, absolutely not, this does not comply or is not within our ideal situation for that shoreline or that lakeshore property. So having that flexibility and the creativeness that comes along with it, like that last PUD that went through, it, it seems more flexible. Just my thoughts.
Laura, can I ask a quick question? Just on the overall conversation with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. Is that when we are asking, when we're submitting, you know, we're, we're not following the guidelines. Is that a, a fairly easy conversation or is it like pulling teeth to get feedback from them?
I haven't personally been a part of that. For the conditional use permits that we've reviewed over the last couple of weeks, that was a simple notification to the DNR and they replied saying, thank you, we have no comments. Those in particular, that was the accessory dwelling unit and then the automobile sales this evening. Those two were not necessarily related or didn't really have impact on the shoreline. The, the ADU, that one was on a riparian lot. So it did border the, I think, Lake Virginia. However, it was enough or setback enough and met their, met their requirements that they had no comments. So I haven't been through the process for, say, for instance, Laketown 11th, the most recent preliminary plat. I wasn't here when that was submitted and when that would have had to go before the, so any issues with the DNR would have been addressed before I got here. So I can't say how onerous that is. I think for development, at the plating process, from what I've heard, it can be just, it can really delay the process a lot. And obviously, we want to make sure our developments are meeting requirements, but we also want to be cognizant of the timetables that our developers in the city need to keep. So that has been a bit of a push on an administrative side that it would be a lot cleaner to just send a notification to the DNR saying this is happening versus needing or requiring a stamp of approval.
So, but those reviews really happened during all the other reviews, I guess. Is there a stop wait period that we are waiting for the DNR? Only if there seems to be issues with the. Only if there seems to be issues with the proposed development. Would there be a, a wait time or a secondary review?
Yes, I, I'm not entirely sure. I would assume that if the DNR finds it not, not in compliance, or something like that, then the application would not be considered complete. And at that point, then the city and the DNR and the applicant would have to work together to find a solution.
So, so if we, if we had an ordinance in place that was our own, and not the Model 1, and they reviewed it and said it's in general compliance, we have a great guideline then to start with, but still have the open flexibility.
Correct, yes.
And Laura, we're, we're not, we're not talking about including the DNR model by reference, right? We're, we're talking about starting with that as a basis, to then customize and edit, and strip out those things that don't apply, and add in those things that make it talk to our other ordinances more effectively, right?
Yes, exactly. So it would be using that as the jumping off point. Anywhere that existing city, um, regulations are more restrictive, we would maintain those. It's mostly as far as a framework of how it's set up. I can pull up just the table of contents, so we have a better reference. This is just how the contents are, um, laid out within the model ordinance, starting with authority and policy, provisions and definitions, administration, the classification system, so that's those, the, um, general development, recreational development, and natural environment, lakes, uh, land uses. The provisions for specific land uses, and then the dimensions and performance standards, following that, as well as vegetation, land alterations, subdivision and plating, and then PUDs being the last section. So this, the way that our current ordinance is organized is, um, doesn't quite have a logical flow to it. It definitely has been written, and then portions amended and added as going along. So, from a writing perspective, this is probably a better, uh, basis, at least as far as just organizationally. However, that's not to say that we would, we would want to make sure that whatever we're using with the model ordinance is what the city wants. And anywhere that we run into a conflict between maybe what the DNR requires, and what the city's existing regulations require, or maybe don't even consider, that's something that Rita would want to highlight, and then bring in front of you for discussion, to say, how do we feel about this? And then, go to the DNR and see if, you know, is this a hard and fast rule? Or is this something that we can be more, um, flexible on? Kind of a give and take.
Laura, when you started this agenda item, you, you said something, I just wanted to clarify, that HKGI is in fact staying involved in this, in this process, when, beyond the interim staff situation?
Yes, yep. So, um, there's a couple of different layers at play. My role as the interim planner for the city will kind of have its conclusion, once we have full-time planning staff. However, um, HKGI is contract for general services, which is separate from our contract for the comp plan. That includes helping ordinance writing and other elements as they come up. And so, we are in this to see it through, yes.
Because I, I think that's, that's important. Because, for example, if that weren't true, I'd be a little hesitant about going too far along with this. Because in, in our, in my experience here, the execution of this, um, the administration matters.
Yes.
In terms of, not only how you communicate with developers and with residents, but also how you sort of make the links and shepherd it through the process. So, but if you're, but if you're suggesting that there's some continuity in, in getting started, I, I think that that, that makes good sense. And, you know, when I, just a thought, when I hear you describe it, it, this, this sort of feels like, even though I know you're asking for direction, like either, yes, go forward with the model ordinance, or, yes, go forward with, you know, editing the existing. It seems like where you start may not be as important as where you end. And, you may not know that until you get into it, right? Like, like you might start down the path of starting with the, with the DNR, but very quickly looking at some of the historical information, and thinking about, well, even though this makes sense as it stands alone, does the flow really relate to all the other key ordinances in our, in our current ordinance system that it needs to? And if it doesn't, you might find that, well, actually, it would be easier to start with the flow that exists, because of, because, because that might have been built around some logic and how things are referenced. And then, use that as a starting point and insert some of the DNR guideline, right? But, but at the end of the day, all you want is a document which incorporates DNR information for compliance, but also speaks well and flows with our, and you're going to have to do a lot of editing, no matter what, is my sense, is that.
Yes.
Sort of like, you gotta merge them, and then you gotta tear them apart. And whether you start with one or the other, I think the effort is probably pretty similar.
Okay.
Well put.
So I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant to sort of tie your hands, but I say, start with the Minnesota DNR, and that's, and, and that's that. It sort of feels like, start with some information gathering, look at the historical information. And maybe the next time we hear from your team about this, may not be like a draft, but it might actually be, well, this is what we've learned.
Yeah.
This is what the standard looks like.
Kind of an interim.
This is where existing looks like. We think we can work with this, we've learned a little bit of new information about looking at the history, and why, and we believe we can overcome them, or we believe we can't, and therefore need to kind of shift our approach.
Yeah.
That feels like a good next discussion.
I have a question too, and, um, just when you were thinking about this with the new community development director. I was going to tell you later, the, the application process is closed, and there's 22 applicants. And the interviews are set for May 18th. So I'm just wondering now, for, as planning commission members, would you rather halt this shoreline thing until you get a community development director? Because of the interpretation and different things? Or do you want HK, and I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, but I'm just thinking, that might be something, because you guys have been, or some of you have been on the board a lot, so.
I appreciate that. It almost makes me think that, um, that first meeting in, first meeting in June, or second meeting in June, whichever you be ready, what a great way to welcome a new new community development director.
They're doing the interviews, May 18th, I don't know when they'll, hopefully, but it's, you know, it's like if we, do we want to start the process if it's a four to six month with HKGI? Or does it go to the community development? And maybe he would still, or she would recommend the council to go with a consultant, but I don't know.
But I feel like, if that was an agenda item on one of the June meetings, between now and then, would be ample time to start information gathering.
Right.
Look at the historical information.
They're still going to need that information.
Right.
They need the historical perspective on it. And when you can tie a little bit more of the, the new ordinances with that from the Department of Natural Resources, that's kind of a perf, that is a perfect handoff.
Yeah. And then, that, that new community development director would have the benefit of a little bit more informed start point.
Yeah.
Because I know you're just getting started today, but I feel like with a little bit more legwork on this, it'll, it'll be a more complete story. And then, as a group, we can learn from what your group has learned, and confidently recommend what the next steps are from there. With the additional guidance of, of a new community development director, that I'm assuming will come with, um, their own experience, and how this has been done in, in the past, and how it could work to administer going forward.
And then, another thing is, um, there's a new water quality committee that has been formed, and they're interested in the shoreline ordinance also. So I would be recommending that they work through either this, or not do it on their own, versus, like, you guys are already working on something.
Not to duplicate the effort. So I think that, that's something that, um, I don't know that Rita knew that, so she could build that into our project of having discussion with the water quality board, as well as perhaps a joint meeting at some point, specifically to talk about this issue, um, with both entities.
Yep, so that was approved at, when they did the, um, the commission. So Lance Fisher is here, he's on that water quality board, I don't know if anybody else is. But, um, they're just getting formed, and they don't have like a specific topics yet, of what their goals are. But, I just want you to be aware that that's, I mean, they've got a vested interest, because it's two, um, community members at large, and then there's certain lakes that have, have a recommended representative. So, they're, this is one of their things they wanted, but I just told some of them to just start looking at this, because you guys have already done a lot. In that December meeting, there was great detail, and then now with this information here, so.
This will be a great, great first effort to leverage that expertise. And I understand that committee hasn't started meeting regularly quite yet, but I think to, to think about how the groups can come together.
Yeah.
Um, sure.
I'm Lance Fisher, 6870 Rolling Eagles Road, and as mentioned, I am one of the at-large members of the Water Quality Committee. And I believe we are indeed looking for opportunities to provide useful, um, support to the city staff and the planning commission for this very kind of thing. And I think this would be an excellent first topic for that group to take and get their teeth into. I think we need your expertise, um, from the perspective of land use planning. But I think our side of the table, which is, the goal of the shoreline ordinance is protection of the water quality of the water bodies. So, I think between the two of us, we could really work something out good.
Yeah. Is it reasonable to think that, that that committee will have begun meeting in the next four to six weeks?
We already had one meeting, and the next one is scheduled for May.
So they're meeting in May 17th, to kind of have an organizational meeting. I think the first one was trying to gather names of who would be interested in the lakes. I did get some information, but...
My understanding is these, this next meeting is, its primary focus is what are our goals? What, what should we be working towards or working on? And this, like I said, sounds like a really excellent opportunity to, uh, provide that, that focus.
In the spirit of collaboration, it feels like this might be a good agenda item for you to add to your May meeting with that group, in terms of, here's an opportunity, think a little bit ahead about how our groups might communicate and come together. And I also might suggest that, you know, we add that, this as an agenda item for that June meeting, that, that should, that should be among our next steps. We don't necessarily have to have the answer, but we should at least talk about it at that time, about what are some effective, um, opportunities to communicate, whether it's a, a joint workshop, or whether it's, I mean, there's probably a range of opportunities to, to bring. We've done this in the past, where committees have, have come together, or communicated among them, either through liaisons, or bringing the groups together.
I, I think, suggested this early-stage liaison would be the most appropriate thing, and work towards a, uh, gather, you know, a mutual meeting at some point, but that seems a little premature at this point.
Yeah, I, I think you're probably right.
So you want to pick somebody.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks Lance.
So, how do you feel, at least in terms of the, the ordinance framework? Is it kind of a non-answer, but, I mean, how do you feel about that as a starting point?
I, I feel like I have good direction on what to bring back to Rita, and what our next priorities need to be about scheduling and elements along those lines. And then I, I agree with Cindy, and about bringing the, um, new community development director, once they are hired and started onboard, as soon as possible. And so, I think that June would likely be a, a good time for that. If that person hasn't started yet, that might be delayed until July, perhaps. But, that's something we can work out, um, on our administrative side with scheduling.
Are you all comfortable with that? I mean, I, I feel like I was dominating the conversation a little bit, just in terms of suggesting potential next steps. But, do you feel okay?
Do I have one question? As a very new member of the community, unfamiliar with the history of like changing your PUD requirements, and using the zoning, and having your, your shoreline regulations, could you direct me to roughly the timeframe when this happened, so that I could look at minutes?
For the, changing the PUDs? So that just happened in 2017, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, and it was over, over, um, quite a few meetings.
Okay.
I mean, several months in terms of exchanging feedback, back, back and forth, but, yeah. If you target...
But you did discuss about the, the shoreline regulations at that time, good.
Yeah, and, um, in particular, you know, you had mentioned late 2017, where we started, at that point, we had approved the new approach for residential zoning, and then started to talk generally, I know there was a presentation of us about some of the philosophy around this different approach. So that might be another good resource, late in 2017. I'm not sure if it was November, December, but...
Thank you.
Okay, are there other items here that we?
I don't need a motion or anything, so I feel like I have adequate, uh, direction from the commission on this item.
Okay. Good, well I think that was a good introduction, and we'll look forward to more to come. Uh, next on our agenda, are we okay moving on? Everybody, we're good?
Yep.
All right, so next on the agenda then is the council meeting updates.
And that's from you, Jeff? Or I?
That was from me? Was I, was I scheduled to have attended a council meeting?
I was wondering if they, if he knew that.
But I watched it.
Okay.
So...
You got my back.
Since I ran the last planning commission, I mean, I kind of wanted to see what went on. But, they, they had basically the things I watched, and it just said, not so much the budget and everything like that, obviously, but the stuff that we review is what I look at anyway. And the, uh, the conditional use permit for the accessory apartment, we called it, I believe, or accessory dwelling, we called it, went through with one change, they put the language back in about the use of the access, accessory dwelling would only be family or friends. So we had stricken that, because we don't restrict, our thought I had brought up, and we agreed, was that we don't restrict how you use your house now. And you could have anybody rent your house at any given time, because in our rental section of, uh, ordinance, we don't restrict who can rent. And we don't really have a, a rule that governs that. But, uh, council felt, and the attorney voted in, and that's kind of why we brought it up, to let him decide if that was legal enough. Verifying the R1, single-family use would restrict it to family members and friends. And he felt comfortable that that ordinance would uphold the use like that. So, it was a good thing we brought up, and brought forward, because it got put back in, and it was looked at. So, as far as that goes, other than that, they, they had used, and there was a question, of course, we had a, about possibly when you attach, when they, once they attached the garage, uh, it was no longer a detached dwelling. Detached dwellings back when that was built was a five-foot setback. Currently, an attached dwelling had to be a minimum of 10 on that side, and up to 20 for a 30 total in an R1. So there might be an issue going forward, where a variance would have to be issued, if that property was to be subdivided, or even approved at that time. So that was something the planning commission had flagged and brought up, and it was also brought up. And it has to be dealt with before the final acceptance or final agreement.
Yes, so, um, that element with the specific setbacks of the, um, of the existing property, or, excuse me, the existing building. or excuse me, the existing building, um, that, that would be verified at time of building permit. Um, and the applicant, since the, it was brought up, uh, when they were, um, in the audience for the, uh, city council meeting, they have indicated to me that they are actually more than likely going to actually demolish the, um, rather than try to build around the frame of that garage. And so the setback is a bit more variable. Um, and so that is something that we will kind of keep tabs on and will be verified at time of building permit review.
And then through the inspection process, it can be verified.
Exactly.
Okay, good. Um, so that was some good points that the commission had brought up and we, we, it, uh, it all worked out and in the end, so our, our points were, it's nice to see your work being noticed, you know, as far as the commission goes. And then the other one was just the, uh, Lake Town eleventh addition. They, there was a few, uh, discussions about the third phase, getting proper access to the county road, which we don't even know where it's going to be yet. And that was our reservation about why we had sent them away or tabled it at that time, if you remember. And they came back, uh, with just the first and second phase and allowing, whether or not to allow more than thirty houses under a single entry permit, uh, building permits for houses under a, a single entrance. And I don't know how that all, what did they say? They'd allow up to thirty-three to get the second one done? Was that, because there was three?
I believe that they, um, put,
Stayed with thirty.
I believe they put language in, or as kind of amended by the, um, city attorney, um, saying that it, they would be limited to the thirty, um, until another access would be available. And if the applicant wanted that to be sooner than later, they would have to do it at their own cost. So.
But overall, it, it got approved as it was presented to us the second time.
Mm-hmm. I think there was one other condition added too.
There was a small condition of, um, at the recommendation of the city attorney, uh, requiring title work to be submitted with the final plat, but that's more of a technical detail than anything else.
That's all I had, I guess.
Yeah, that's good. So I'm sorry I missed my responsibility this week.
Here's the deal I'm going to make with you. The next meeting, if you can make it, I can't.
Well, I think, I think we can talk about that. And, uh, what I was curious about though is, um, I remember we were holding off on the schedule for this coming year until we, we got our, um,
Yes, sorry. So you weren't here last week or last time, but we, I presented a new schedule and I didn't, I put that in our packet, but I didn't distribute it. So,
Oh, okay.
As an email. So, uh, we have a new schedule now with our new members.
Did you resend that whole schedule?
Yes, I can resend, I will resend that.
Perfect. Um, yeah, it'd be great if you could send it out then.
Yep.
We've got a PDF version of it and we can, um, we will, uh, get back on track.
Yep.
Can I add just one more?
Yeah.
Thing on that. So the, um, they also talked, they did approve the Planning Commission alternate type of thing that we had talked about at the last Planning Commission meeting. So, um,
Yeah.
Do you want to?
Is there some background on that if you don't mind?
What the thought was is so if for some reason we don't have a quorum.
Or even a full.
Even a full commission. That's right. That's what it was. So if we have six out of our seven, we would continuously have two alternates, a main alternate and a secondary alternate that would come to the meetings, uh, and follow through, uh, as a alternate Planning Commission member. And if we were short one, that person would step forward that night and fill in.
This is to achieve a quorum?
At least a quorum and if not a full commission.
The idea being, um, with the alternates to, um, have people who are, to make sure that we have a commission that is, uh, fully seated. Um, and, uh, another reason being that for our most recent openings on the Planning Commission, there were a lot of, um, very qualified candidates and a lot of people who are enthusiastic, um, about the opportunity to work with the Planning Commission. So the role of an alternate would be to attend meetings. They could engage in the discussion as you do at the podium, or excuse me, at the table up here. Um, if there are seven members seated, they would not vote, um, but they could engage in the discussion.
Yeah, Doug is working on that, but that would not be, they would just be audience members. That's kind of what, he's still on the working of it, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't be like nine people. It would still just be the seven, um, commissioners at the table. And then if they're in the audience, they were just seated and quiet and unless you called on them to ask, but otherwise it'd be just the seven.
Okay.
With the idea of being that, um, applicants who come forward, if we don't have a full commission, that there still would be alternates, um, who could vote, who understand, um, have a background with the zoning, how these things, you know, so it's to have kind of just a more representative body.
So when we, when I was doing the research for, um, the twenty seventeen, there was never one meeting in twenty seventeen that you had a full seven-member Planning Commission. So then it just got us to thinking maybe the alternates would be a good way. And then in the future, maybe the alternates would be applying for the regular seat and then you'd have somebody that would already be kind of knowledgeable getting on.
Yeah, I think that's good. Um, I appreciate the clarification though, to be honest, that, but between, because I think that either way could be successful, but clarity around it is, is important. So that there isn't confusion about if there, you know, if there's some sitting members in the audience that are engaging in a, um, so just that there's that clarity and that as we start the meeting, we know who's, who's up here, who's engaged, who's, who's, uh, that will just, I think, help us all sort of manage expectations.
And I believe that, um, Doug is, our interim manager is going to prepare that and have it for council discussion on May fourteenth with those kind of rules and parameters set up. Um, so we should probably give that to you after, but that's kind of what his goal was to get that.
We continue to evolve. Anything else on council meeting updates? No. If not, then next item on the agenda is miscellaneous and we have open meeting law data practices overview.
Yep, and that will be me.
Cindy?
So, um, at the request of the mayor and council last year, they asked that I provide this input every year. So after the new Planning Commission members have started. So on your desk, I penned out the open meeting law and a data practices sheet. Um, so we're going to watch a video. It's a five-minute video, five and a half minute. Um, and they will, so some of the talk on that, we'll talk about closing meetings, but you are not in a position for closed meetings, but, um, it's just part of the open meeting law. And you, if you were to ever close a meeting, you would look to staff to properly do the process because there's certain verbiage that's required in the minutes when you do that. But there's other things on this video, so we'll just start that and then.
This training is about Minnesota's open meeting law. You can read more about the law in Minnesota statutes.
That too loud?
Chapter thirteen D. The open meeting law requires all public body meetings be open to the public. The general public, including the media, can attend. The law prohibits secret meetings. It ensures the public's right to be present and informed on public body decisions. State-level public bodies include state agency boards, commissions, and departments if the law requires or permits them to conduct business and meetings. Local bodies include school boards, county boards, city councils, and township boards. The Minnesota Supreme Court said that a meeting is when a quorum of a public body discusses, decides, or receives information as a group on issues relating to official business. The law does not apply to social gatherings such as banquets or parties if official business isn't discussed. Public bodies must keep a schedule of regular meetings on file. If a body changes the date, time, or location of regular meeting, that meeting becomes a special meeting. A special meeting is any meeting that does not appear on the regular meeting schedule. Notice of a special meeting must be posted on the principal bulletin board or meeting room door at least three calendar days in advance. It must include the date, time, place, and meeting topics. Only the topics on the notice may be discussed at the meeting. State-level bodies may post a web notice. Emergency meetings are special meetings where three-day advance notice is not possible, like a tornado or flood. The only requirement for emergency meetings is to notify media members who have requested notice. The open meeting law does not discuss whether the exchange of emails via a quorum of a public body's members is a meeting. However, the Commissioner of Administration has said in an advisory opinion that a violation occurred when a quorum of a public body discussed official business over email. The open meeting law allows closed meetings only for reasons stated in law. To properly hold a closed meeting, a public body must make a statement on the record during an open meeting. A member of the body must give a specific legal authority that permits or requires closing the meeting. Giving the statute section works. The statement must also include discussion topics for the closed meeting. Discussions must be limited to those topics. Meetings must be closed to discuss certain victims or mandated reporters of criminal sexual conduct, domestic violence, and maltreatment of minors or vulnerable adults, active criminal investigations and law enforcement officer misconduct, educational data, certain medical data, welfare and mental health data, and preliminary allegations against an individual subject to the body's authority. The individual can request the meeting be open. Some meetings may be closed at the public body's discretion. A body may hold a closed meeting to discuss labor negotiation strategies, evaluate an employee's performance unless the employee requests that the meeting be open, to evaluate certain property transactions, or to discuss security matters. A closed meeting can be held on the basis of attorney-client privilege. The Minnesota Supreme Court says privilege should be used cautiously and usually only for threatened or pending litigation. All closed meetings must be recorded except those closed for attorney-client privilege. Both state and local bodies are permitted to use interactive TV, which includes Skype, if they meet certain requirements. State-level public bodies can have telephone meetings if certain requirements are met. Local public bodies can only have telephone meetings if the governor declares an emergency. Public bodies can discuss not-public data at open meetings if it relates to official business. The not-public data remain protected. At every open meeting, at least one copy of all public materials distributed to members related to agenda items must be available for the public. No government office has the authority to investigate open meeting law violations. If a person sues members of a public body for intentionally violating the law and succeeds, the court may impose penalties. A member who intentionally violates the law three or more times while on a public body must forfeit the right to serve on that public body. By law, violations of the open meeting law cannot be reversed. There are some common misconceptions about the open meeting law. The open meeting law does not require public bodies to keep minutes or create agendas. However, other laws or ordinances may require you to do so. It is not required to post notice for regular meetings. The open meeting law does not require public bodies to conduct meetings using Robert's Rules of Order. Finally, while the open meeting law ensures the public a right to be present at open meetings, it does not guarantee your right for the public to speak at them. Thank you for watching this training video. If you have any questions about the open meeting law, please visit Data Practices Office online. Call us at six five one two nine six six seven three three, or email us at info dot iPad at state dot M N dot U S.
Okay, so that is that part. So I just will go over some of the meeting on the open meeting law. Um, and like I said, most of those closed meetings would be held by the city council and not yourselves. Um, and like the public has the right, under the who, the public has, um, the right to attend open meetings to observe the decision-making process, but not necessarily participate. Um, and what, under the what, a public meeting occurs when a quorum of the public body is present and discusses official business. And under the when, every public meeting must be properly noticed. And I have done that and I posted them on the display case in the foyer over there. So that part is taken care of by staff. And then under the why, um, the Minnesota Supreme Court has stated that the purpose of the, the open meeting law is to prohibit public bodies from holding secret meetings where they may hide their decision-making process from the public, to allow the public to be informed and to allow the public to be present, to present its views to their public bodies. But when I went to the training for this, they did say it's fraught with peril and it's one gray area after another because they say things like she had said, but it, like the email thing where, um, they don't specifically say that email trail is an open meeting violation, but people have been charged with that. So, um, I will go on to some other questions that came up last year or discussion points, and then if you have any questions, we can go over those. So the city of Victoria only provides city council members with an email account due to the nature of their position. So yours is more limited and the city of Victoria does not provide that at the current time. So if you, but if you still, we correspond with you over email. So when we send an email out to you, um, if you could just reply, if you need to reply at all just to either Laura or myself and do not hit the reply all, because you could get in trouble that way. So we just want to make sure you realize that. Um, and if you get the full group, okay, I might have to reiterate something else. But if you get a full group commission email from a resident requesting feedback, I would suggest that the only person that would respond would be the chair, which would be Jeff at this time. And then Jeff could forward it to the correct staff member and not like each of you discussing it with that. Just, just if you have that practice, that you just have, the chair is going to be the one to respond to any of those. Um, and then the current staff right now would be Laura, right? And you all have her email for that. And then as mentioned in the video, if you are at a gathering and there happens to be a quorum of your particular commission and you are not talking about city business, you are fine. But if the topic ends up going in that direction where it's city business starts, someone should excuse themselves or bring up the concern of an open meeting law violation. And then likewise, if a resident comes up to you when you're in a group setting with some of your planning commission members and asks you about the city, if you could just tell them that, um, to submit the question to the city hall and disperse from your quorum so that there's no thing. Because in a smaller town, sometimes you are at the same events and happen to just congregate, so. And a concern that was brought up last year was due to the current environment of the city of Victoria with the open meeting law lawsuit at the Supreme Court, um, which we just found out that it'll be May seventh, it's going to be heard. Um, you are performing a civic duty, volunteering basically for your community and concern was about getting sued. And to provide a bit of comfort for you, the city of Victoria does have insurance with the League of Minnesota Cities. And, um, as a commission member, you are covered under that, under your course of duty. And there is a limit of X amount of dollars. I don't know what that is off the top of my head, but. And are there any other concerns that I haven't addressed regarding the open meeting law? Or do you have any questions regarding that that I could check into and get back to you and then do a better job at the next commission, meaning, or not commission man, but the committee member meeting I have to go to? If not, then we can go to the data practices, which is on the backside of that. And the handout is really geared more towards staff, but I'll just go over a few items under the what. Um, so government data means all data collected, created, received, maintained, or disseminated by the state or local government regardless of its physical form, storage media or conditions of use. So it's the paper documents, emails, CD-ROMs, videotape, all that. And it's the why. The act seeks to balance the three principles of government has, the need to do, governments need to have data to do its work, the need to maintain an accountable and transparent government, and the need to protect individual privacy rights. And then the how is a person submits a data request and we have to have at the city a responsible authority for the government entity to maintain that data. And right now, that's me and then Kelly Grinnell, who's our finance director. So any data requests that we get, um, we just handle them in that way. So to make it more applicable to your situation, any of your written notes or comments are not a true city record and the city is not responsible for them for retention purposes. So however, if you maintain your notes regarding your meetings and a data practices request comes in, the notes are government data and would be subject to disclosure under the Data Practices Act. And I would contact you to find out if you kept any notes on a particular subject. And if you did, I would request copies. And if you didn't, there would be nothing for me to gather. And I haven't had anything like that in the past. Um, many people will recycle their packets or notes after a meeting or within a Many people will recycle their packets or notes after a meeting or within a certain timeframe of a meeting. The city does have a vendor come in to shred documents, and you can utilize that if you would like for your packets of notes that you have taken as your capacity as a commissioner, but there is no requirement for you to keep any of your notes. So if, do you have any questions on that portion?
Does this apply in any way to email correspondence? I mean, in terms of, by the nature of notifications and emails being exchanged between city staff and, and commission members?
So.
Could someone come in and request data and, and then does that reach beyond just the emails between, that are dealing with city business? For example, like, is my company at, at risk of exposure in terms of Data Practices Act wanting all my emails that would include both city business and my company emails?
I will check into that, I know that there have been different city council members that, in a different city, that had to turn in their phones for that. I don't know how that works exactly for that, do you have any?
I haven't run into that in particular, but my I've, my feeling would be that as long as you, as commissioners, any requests that you're getting from, by email from residents or correspondents or questions that you have, if you're forwarding those to city staff or sending those inquiries to city staff as the recipient, then the data practices, that would apply to the city, your correspondence would be.
At the city level.
At the city level. I don't know that it would extend beyond that.
Yeah, and what, we're trying to come up with a policy so that who is responsible, like if Laura sends out something to all of you, then it would be her responsibility to keep that retention and you guys could delete all your, that right away. Any transitory, like if saying, like you're not gonna be able to make the meeting, you could delete that off your phone right away so you don't have that stored there. But I will look into the further question of like how that affects everything else.
Because part of the nature of my question is, for example, like council members, do they have a City of Victoria email address?
Yes.
Yeah, which is different from our commission and I'd assume other committees where we're using either
Your own.
personal email accounts or our business email accounts. So that's just the nature of my question, is does that then?
Open it up, yeah.
Open it up in a, in an onerous way that, you know, suddenly it's not just about the email exchange between the individual and city staff, but it starts bringing in.
And that would be a concern, and we could, at some point, if that, it becomes more, like the city could, that would just be like a condition of being on a planning commission, you get your own email account from the city.
I, when I first became a member of the Planning Commission, I, I brought this to the attention here because any information that flows between the city and us, no matter which email account goes, is public data, and people can come in and do a public data request, and you'd have to provide them with that information. So, you know, my recommendation is that anybody on the commission here should have a city email account, and all city information should flow through there just to avoid the potential that they could subpoena or, you know, request data from our private email accounts, and then they have access to private information that we don't want them to see.
I think that, that's a, you know, in this day and age, it seems like maybe that's the better route to go now with that, and we do have that capability to issue just the email accounts, and that's all it would be, so. I could send that request to the manager to see if he could put it on.
Because I'm, because I'm thinking from a standpoint of not only from a personal standpoint, you know, that, you know, it's sort of like the discovery process in a, in a legal proceeding, and I know that's not, it's not the same thing, but it, it's somewhere in between, right? If you're using your personal email, but then also from a, if any of us are using our corporate emails, for example, does that, does that reach, start to then sort of bundle and, and create an onerous situat, an onerous situation for our, us as individuals, but also our companies to now, you know, even though it might be the 10 emails that were city business, but it's the thousands and thousands of emails that are really not intended for, for public consumption.
Yep.
Folded into that somehow, and I think trying to, trying to restrict that is reasonable. And if it's having a city email address or some other approach, I think that would be good to explore.
Should I, would it be like the consensus of the Planning Commission would be to establish private emails, or emails through the city? Would that be a consensus that I could bring forward to?
I would prefer that, yes.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah. And then we would, yeah, because we'd like people to like delete things too that are not part city business, like the, like I can't make the meeting, that part, but the other parts where if you're discussing certain stuff, then you'd have to keep that stuff, but you'd have to have a.
So it just cleans it all up.
Mm-hmm, right, okay. Any other questions or comments on any of that? Thank you, that would, and then I guess, let's see, I talked about the water quality, the planning, and I'm good with all the rest of my stuff.
Mr. Chair, I have a few other miscellaneous items to bring up before the rest of the commission wants to talk about their miscellaneous items. The comprehensive plan update, just a reminder that the steering commi, excuse me, the steering committee meeting, the steering committee is meeting tomorrow evening to look over the draft of the comprehensive plan. My understanding is that there are a few areas that still need to be updated, and so the direction from the steering committee is going to actually prob, more than likely result in some changes that of what is going to be presented to you at the May 15th meeting. And I'm hoping to get an understanding from our Brad over at HKGI of the timing of that draft, so we can give you guys as much time, ahead of time, to see that updated draft. With that, you are invited to attend the steering committee meeting tomorrow and kind of observe the conversation for those of you who aren't already members of that committee. And just a note, just to let you all know, I will not be at the next Planning Commission meeting on the 15th. The comp plan update is the only item on the agenda, and Kara will be here, and then Brad from HKGI will be presenting. And so I think between the two of them and Jeff, perhaps you, that the meeting could be able to go forward without me, so. Sorry to miss out on that, I think it'll be an interesting conversation, for sure.
I'll just add to that. I'm hoping John is able to attend tomorrow night, but I'll just let this go, I am not able to attend tomorrow night at the, at the steering committee. Well, and you too, Scott. I think there's some good continuity, if others are attending tomorrow night, that can also then support the conversation here in the future. But I have a conflict, so. I will have my head in the, in the process, but tomorrow's discussion I'll have to catch up on.
And then my final miscellaneous item kind of relates to our shoreline ordinance update discussion that we had today. Looking at what ordinances we are trying to address right now, so close to perhaps bringing on, and hopefully bringing on full-time CD director, and then hopefully shortly after that, a full-time city planner. We made the determination, or I made the determination that we will not be discussing the chicken ordinance until after there's full-time planning staff. I had looked at it, hoping for it to be on this meeting's agenda, with assurances from the previous planners that it was pretty much set to go with some minor adjustments. After looking over the draft ordinance and talking through it with the city attorney, we agreed that there were too many technical elements that needed updating and would require too much time to get it on this agenda. And right now, we just don't have planning staff capacity to adequately address all of those. A portion of that is that part of that ordinance will likely have to be not in the zoning ordinance, but amendments to either our animals section of our city code or possibly some licensing amendments, so. That all needs to be worked out, and since we're at part-time right now, we're gonna just wait until we have full-time staff to adequately and thoroughly address that. So if you have any questions from residents on that, you can direct them towards me. We are keeping a running list of ordinances that, issues that have come up, for instance, the, obviously the tree preservation has been a element, the additional setbacks of accessory dwelling units or bulk standards that, if we want to address that, or that was brought up at the last Planning Commission meeting, so these are all kind of a running list that we will then pass over to full-time planning staff, and they can prioritize with you as a body of what needs to be done first. Obviously, the shoreline, since we're going to slowly move our way forward on that, we wanted to keep that going and and we are working on those next steps, but as that one is kind of a more complicated process, we want to make sure those elements are happening in the background, so. That's all I have.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Thank you. Did anybody else have any questions or comments under miscellaneous?
None.
None.
With that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Enjoy your evening.